Good thing I did. So, anyway. All right. Changes to the agenda. We're going to remove E4 and we're going to add E7. Presentations. We have proclamation presented to Ms. Reha Patel, who's representative for the Space Coast Health Foundation for National Suicide Prevention. Let's see. Here's the proclamation. Whereas the town of Indian Atlantic has recognized September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Month as recognized by the National Association of Mental Illness, and whereas many health officials and community leaders locally state and nationally understand that mental illness is a significant issue of concern, particularly among our youth, and whereas we realize that to address mental health issues requires more open and honest discussions about mental health, and whereas one major hurdle is removing the stigma attached to mental health treatment and discussion, and whereas individuals, businesses, organizations, public officials, and many others recognize the importance of emotional health, and whereas the town of Indian Atlantic supports efforts on the space coast to provide education and resources for mental health problems, and whereas the town of Indian Atlantic will encourage a positive effort to encourage those with mental health issues to seek the help of a family member, friend, colleague, and/or licensed mental health professional to assist them in times of need. Now there, I, Mark McNermet, mayor of town of Indian Atlantic, do hereby proclaim the month of 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Month. The town of Indian Atlantic, and extend greetings and best wishes to all observing, excuse me, September as National Suicide Prevention Month. Mr. Patel, you have a quick word?
Yep, thank you. I'm honored to be here today representing the Space Coast Health Foundation. I want to thank you for your support in the foundation's effort to know Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which began September 1st. Indian Atlantic for many years has been a partner in helping the foundation's efforts to boost access to quality health care, including mental health, for the community. You've supported the Suicide Prevention Awareness Initiative in the past, and I believe it's made a difference. According to the Florida Department of Health, number of suicides in Brevard County decreased to 115 in 2022 from 141 five years earlier. That 2022 figure was the lowest number of suicides on the space coast since 2014, when there were 114. Obviously, one suicide is one too many, but we're trending in the right direction, and part of the reason is because of support from our local governments. It's all about creating awareness and about helping us, helping us find the resources for mental health and using those resources efficiently. It's about making a difference, and the city of Indian Atlantic is making a difference. So the foundation thanks you for this proclamation, and so does Space Coast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[275.12][275.12](applause)
Public comment for non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak to address the town council on a matter not listed on the agenda may speak at this time. Let's provide your name, address, and three minutes. Any non, or any non-agenda item, public comment. All right. Public announcements. There are openings on the following boards and committees: Budget and Finance, Civil Service, Code Enforcement, Heritage, Parks, Recreation and Beautification, and Pension Board for the General Employees. The following candidates qualified are and are unopposed and will be sworn in the regular town council meeting on December 11th. Me, Mayor of Indian Atlantic, John Brady, who will be taking over for Stu, right?
I think so.
Yeah. Stu's seat, and Carrie Foy will be taking over Lauren's seat. Consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I will make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
I'd like one item pulled. Mr. Mayor, please.
All right, which one?
Item B3, please.
B3, all right.
I accept it.
Accept. Is there a second on that?
One second, I think so.
Oh, okay. All right. All in favor of approving the consent agenda with item 3 pulled, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, Lauren?
Thank you. My understanding on B3 is that we're raising the approval limit from $500 to $1,000. Is that what's being proposed?
What's being proposed is, yeah, for the purchasing, we have purchase orders and anything's $500 right now. It's be signed by me, the finance director, and the department head. This would move it to $1,000. But all the purchases are anyway. Any invoices, she does, and I sign every, every purchase order, or every invoice in a town. This would be the purchase order amount, because the cost have risen over the years and things. We haven't changed the number.
Okay, so the particular problem being solved here is what?
It cuts down the paperwork and the time with everything. When you're buying small items these days, it's not $100, $200, it's $500, $600.
So is this paperwork reduction mostly?
Paperwork reduction and time. Yeah, staff time.
And which staff members will benefit most?
The department heads. That's always allowing the department heads to buy.
So the department heads won't have to sign for things $1,000 and below?
Yeah, the department heads are the only ones that are authorized to purchase unless they authorize somebody else within their department to purchase.
Say that one more time. It's hard here.
No. The department heads are the only ones that are authorized to purchase within their, unless they authorize somebody else and things like that. Like, public works are authorized to go, they don't spend that much money, you know, a screw or 20, 30 bucks at Ace Hardware. But it's when we're buying things and ordering things.
Yeah, I wasn't questioning the lower amount. I was just trying to understand the benefits and the problem moving it from $500 to $1,000. And I'm hearing it's paperwork, reduction staff time, and it's easier.
It'll save, yeah. And, you know, we're, the triple copies, all the purchase orders. Eventually, it does save some money, too.
Okay.
Besides staff time.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have nothing else on that. You want to have further discussion, or would you like a motion?
I will take a motion.
Okay, I move to approve item B3, 12-2024 precumeral policy.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor of approving B3 in the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes. Moving on. Ordinance of public hearing, item 1, public hearing, adopt tentative millage rate for fiscal year 2024 to 2025. Mike? Is there any discussion from the council?
I'm sorry, I'll choose.
Or a motion?
Um, will we make a motion first while we discuss? Yes, I'll make a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2024, 2025 is 5.9999.
4.9.
Which is a 7.23% above, over the rollback rate of 5.951. And the increase over the rollback rate will provide for funds for existing and projected public safety needs. Note, there's a separate millage of 1 mil for storm water improvements, which was approved by voters in March 2018.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion. Brett, do you got anything?
Nope.
Lauren?
No, sir.
Doug?
I'm good.
Stu?
I'm good.
You're sure?
Yeah.
Did we announce that the, the purpose of what the increase over the rollback rate was?
Yes, we, we stated this to provide public funds, funds for existing and projected public.
I just want to make sure we get that on the record.
Yes, sir.
A public comment. All right, all those in favor of adopting the tentative millage rate of fiscal year 2024, 2025 of 7, of point, of 5.9999, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes. Public hearing, adopt tentative budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Tentative fiscal year 24, 25 budget is $9,465,942, which includes the general fund budget of $7,937,094. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brett, you got anything?
Nope.
Lauren?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Doug?
Just a reminder, there's a budget workshop coming up later this month, Monday the 23rd, at 5:00 PM, 5:30, at which, at which time we will finish the workshopping of the budget and the final approval of said budget.
Is it Monday? I had it Wednesday.
No, it's, it's Monday the 23rd.
Oh, I might have to change something.
23rd.
Okay. I might have to change something. All right. Stu, you have anything?
That was my only comment.
Do you have anything?
Just have one comment, and it's made it last month. We still have the median project sitting out there, which I guess might come out requesting second bid, or you're about ready to. Although I would say, let's approve, approve the money. I'm not sure that we want to approve the plan until we get a, you know, until we get a final bid on it. Reason being, really, you don't want to spend a half a million dollars on little teeny plants. Let's, you know, let's do pavers, let's do grass, whatever. I think we need to investigate that, unless we're pleasantly surprised by the results of the bid.
Have you gotten any feedback from Susan on that?
You're talking about anything else? We'd have to still go through FDOT and get it approved and things.
Right.
We didn't get the grant, but we'd have to have, do the whole thing, apply to them, put in what we'd want to put in, go back and forth, kind of like we're doing now with the plans.
You're, so you have bids out for the median?
It is out, as of tomorrow. The proposed bid is going on, we advertise in the Florida Today, starting tomorrow for a week, and it's also going on in a website called DemandStar, which does bids and things. And we've got a post on our website, and we've kind of reached out to a couple contractors Susan has, to let them know we're going out to bid on this.
And then by the, when do we expect bids back? Before the 23rd?
It won't be before the 23rd, no, because it's.
Before the next council meeting in October?
The, I believe it's in the November meeting. If we don't close, we have an October, going off the timeline in my head. October is like the, we have a bid meeting, so it's going to be November to December approval.
We have a bid meeting, yes, fair enough.
Yeah. Because we have to go through a pre-bid meeting, then we have to, the three, four weeks we have it out, they have to bid, and then we close the bids, and we open the bids, and then we bring it to council. So I think it's the December meeting we have is scheduled to come to council.
And then that would be the determination on how to.
Yea or nay. Yeah.
Public comment on the 2024, 2025 budget. All those in favor of adopting tentative budget for fiscal year 2024 to 2025, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Jennifer, you can go home early. Yeah. All right, item number 3, ordinance 2024-10, second final reading, public hearing related to the regulation of noise.
Ordinance number 2024-10, an ordinance of the town of Indian Atlantic, Brevard County, Florida, relating to the regulation of noise-making findings, repealing and replacing the provisions of Chapter 22, Article 2, Noise of the Town of Indian Atlantic Code of Ordinances, providing definitions, providing a statement of public policy, providing for purpose and application, prohibiting noise disturbance based on a plainly audible standard, providing for activities that are exempt from being a noise disturbance, providing for warnings and penalties, providing for subliminal interpretation, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion from council?
I will make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-10.
Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
All right, discussion. Brett, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, we just cleaned up some things. You can see it in the draft that was circulated where the highlighted portions are. Oh, I will say, I do want to put on the record, I guess, Mr. Rali and his, apologize if I pronounce your name incorrectly, but, and his attorney and consultant were not aware that we were discussing the meeting, or the noise ordinance at our last meeting. So they reached out to voice, or really just raised kind of two issues. We had a telephone conference on August 26, Monday, August 26, at 2:00. It was myself, and then on the line were Mr. Rali, his attorney, he's the right group represented by council, and his consultant, Kelly Hybonen. And the two things they raised were asking about the interpretation for amplification on the sound amplifying. I informed him what I said at the last meeting, that, you know, that was pretty much a carryover from how it's currently in our code. I didn't have a particular interpretation for how it's enforced, and I reiterated that, you know, as you'll see in the meeting, I desired to, you know, tighten up the definition of sound amplification, because we kind of had a really broad, remember we talked about last time, how it could be like Bluetooth speaker and such, like, would that be, you know, considered? So they raised that. And then also, his attorney, kind of, and others had raised this in the, in the, during public comment during the meeting, about the higher threshold, the higher standard that's applied during the daytime. And he wanted, you know, kind of more clear definition. I said, hey, you know, you're more than welcome to propose something. I'm not, you know, I don't have an easy way to define that. And then we ended up receiving, I think all of council received it, an email yesterday with his proposed, Mr. Rali's attorney's proposed definition or language for higher threshold, which I guess I can read that into the record if you want.
Sure.
Okay, so he says, "Higher threshold as used herein shall mean that the plainly audible noise disturbance must be documented with a clearly audible video and audio recording, accompanied with contemporaneous written notes by a city official who witnessed the noise, and memorialized in an affidavit executed within 72 hours of the noise disturbance. The affidavit must be extremely thorough, exhaustive, and accurate regarding time, place, and manner of the noise disturbance." That's his proposal, which, you know, we don't have as part of the language right now. So, I did work with Paul, you know, further. I do, we, as we had discussed the last meeting, you know, we may want to revisit the section on amplification. You know, Paul and I kind of want to keep working on that. There's some issues to, to review with, I guess, the state statute and such. But otherwise, I'm still prepared to approve it as is and how we've made these non-substantive edits. And then, to the extent that we may need to address the amplification section at a later meeting, then we do so.
How does that work, Paul? If we decide to look at the amplification definition, that kind of thing?
We'd bring it back as a separate ordinance for you.
Oh, okay. So if it passed tonight, it would go into effect, and then it would be changed with, subsequently with a?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And if passed tonight, the amplification is really, it's just a carryover from how it was previously, other than perhaps, you know, cleaning up the language slightly, but not substantively.
Lauren, do you have any comment?
Well, I'd first like to know, Brett, whether you, you got to discuss the higher threshold proposed language. There are a lot of words in there that are open to interpretation: clearly audible, contemporaneous, extremely thorough, exhaustive, and accurate. Are you adding that language in, proposing it, or not?
No, no, I was just reading into the record what was proposed by Mr. Rali's attorney. It's my personal opinion that all, that would kind of be superfluous. It's, all of that is already encapsulated in the overall plainly audible section.
Okay, so you're not proposing that any further. Okay. The, the challenges still have is the same thing that a lot of the residents that wrote in are concerned about, and there's a lot of room for a lot of warnings before other things move in. You give extremely long or wide latitude, I think, to have warning after warning after warning. So I struggle with that approach, and that happens when we see, in other code enforcement issues, people who don't comply, and then often are, or at least the ones I observe as I walk by, they just are not further addressed. So I struggle with the latitude. Was there a reason you had so many warnings in there, in this particular one? And it was noted by some others who looked at other similar language, that there were much fewer warnings in other towns. When I looked at them, that was correct.
Yeah, my position, as I had originally drafted it, was, as I said, the American three strikes, you're out rule. So you essentially get two warnings, and then the third is an actual, you know, penalty. Based upon our discussions at the last meeting, Mr. Googleman added other recommendations about, it's not just be three times in 24 hours, but it be four times within a 48-hour period, or five times within 14 consecutive days, which, that's pretty generous to the complaining party.
Yes.
You know, I guess the way I view it is, I think the concern is more to people unreasonably and unnecessarily complaining. Because again, this is not about, this is not drafted for a particular issue or dispute between two parties that may be occurring. This has been drafted for the town as a whole. So I'm not making any sort of changes just to appease one particular group of people. Or, that's not my goal. If we, as a council, vote to make particular changes, and that's how other people make their decisions, that's fine, so be it. But that's not the way I'm approaching the issue.
If someone complains, and it's found to not be an issue, while that may be seen as something that, that took time of our officers or our official, the idea is no one's in fault, right? The person who complained would be stated why it was found to be in compliance. Would that be correct?
Or why, yeah, that's not deemed to be a noise disturbance.
Right. It's not noise disturbance, but there, there's lots of strikes here for, and that was what was raised, for folks who are going to have to complain. The concern is multiple times to, again, get the, those who choose to repeat offend have leeway, quite a bit of leeway. So that's my input on it.
Lauren, do you have any suggested?
I'd like to see what else you all feel, because if I'm, if I'm in the, you know, small opinion here, it won't really matter. So I'm just curious what you all think as colleagues, and I'm listening to, to understand Brett's, the way he sees it, to be fair for everyone.
Doug, you got anything?
Yes, yes, I do. Thanks, Mayor. So I spoke with Chief Connor to get some perspective on how this would be utilized. He informed me and confirmed that, you know, our, the IPD process for, for any violation or any citation or any, really any visit on anything would, includes the rigor as described by, by the input provided from, from, from the public. So I'm confident, and the chief, I'll ask him to come up to speak in just a second, he can cover that ground in terms of his department, how it operates, in terms of meeting that threshold, as well as what's already described in the, in the code. Additionally, while, and the chief can elaborate on this as well, while there are three strikes and you're out, four strikes over a 48 period, five over 14 consecutive day period, IPD and other law enforcement agencies from the state of Florida have other tools for public disturbances, that if they arose to that level, could take immediate action, should that be necessary with the offending party, regardless of what is in our code, as it pertains to the noise ordinance. And then Chief Connor can also provide some background in terms of how often we've had to employ that in the many years of service that he and his colleagues have been, been on patrol in Indian Atlantic. And I think, by and large, as written, the, the noise ordinance is, is, is well-suited for us to proceed with tonight and approve. That's my, my opinion going forward. But I would invite the chief to come, either, we can wait for Stu, Councilman, we're going to provide his inputs, or we can have the chief come up now. Let your decision.
I guess the chief to come anyway, so it's up to him.
Good afternoon. So, in looking at this, and again, Councilman Miller did a fantastic job on that. I would just caution about too many warnings and this and that, because if you, if you put, if you make it too restrictive, it kind of handcuffs us to where it's not subjective and we, or objective, and we have to go in and do some type of enforcement action, up to and including an arrest. And if you put too many warnings in, then it kind of becomes a joke, and there's just no bite to it. But I would submit, I would leave it the way that it is, and just let us, let us do our job. In nearly three decades of being a police officer here in town, and I've talked to the town manager about this, and his experience as a former police officer here also, it just, we don't have an issue with it. And when it does become an issue, we address it and we, and we move on. So if we were actually going to enforce anything with this anyway, Chapter 877 in the Florida statute deals with breach of peace. And we would probably actually go that route versus writing it up as, as an ordinance violation. Under that statute, for disorderly conduct, there are enumerated things. I mean, it even spells it out, fighting and yelling and things like that. We just really, we don't have a problem here in town. And when we do, again, and as I said in the last meeting, when we do address it, we usually get compliance. And it's, it's the officer's interpretation. It's, it's what a reasonable officer would think. I was joking around earlier on the phone that, that my department is the only department in town that has, is required to get a psychological exam and a polygraph exam before being employed. So I think that we're pretty reasonable, and we can make sound judgments. And if we don't, then that's my problem to deal with through, through the way that we, we process those. So as far as the warnings and things like that, I think just let us do our job. And we've, we've been successful at it in the past. Putting parameters like two warnings within 72 hours, and five warnings within eight days, and the calendar, and what if it's a leap year? I mean, it's just, there's so much to keep, keep track of. And as far as, because it was read in, we do write a report every time that we do have a call for service on a noise violation. And that report could be just what we call CAD comments, computer aided dispatch comments, which could be a one liner. We showed up, we didn't hear anything. We showed up, and we made contact with so-and-so, and the noise was abated, and we moved on to something else. So that is a report. There is a date, timestamp, where dispatch receives a call, and we clear, and arrival time, and a clear time, and then what our final disposition is. So we, we're really good about documenting that. We're really good about having a very positive interaction and relationship with the residents of the town of Indian Atlantic, even some of the bad apples. We, we are able to, to come into compliance, and, and we move on to other things. So I just think that we've done okay so far, so.
Yeah, how would, you mentioned the breach of peace ordinance, or statute, I guess. How, how does that play in? I mean, like, if we left the warnings in, you know, can you, is there something that could escalate that from, going from one warning to some type of arrest or ticket?
Yes. So if we were going to respond to the same address over and over and again, and we're talking about. and we're talking about a quality of life issue and tranquility issue and things like that, and we, we get that, and if this person is just not going to comply, and we hear it, and it's a violation, it's a second degree misdemeanor, it has to occur in our presence, as would the ordinance, to take any type of enforcement action on it. The state attorney's office, I can guarantee you, would be much more apt to process a missed Florida, violation of Florida statute versus an ordinance. It's $100 to process the ordinance if we lose, we've got to pay attorney fees and all that through an ordinance violation. But under Florida statute, it's just like any other criminal offense, you know, 60 days in jail, $500 fine, you know, so there's, there's more teeth to that, and that's the route we would take. I mean, every ordinance violation in the town is technically enforceable by the police officers, which we are code sworn in as, to uphold the codes of the town of Indian Atlantic also. But we, we prefer to use statute if we can, because that way, again, it is a violation of the state law, and I know, especially speaking to the current and outgoing state attorney, they're, they're more, they would much rather process a misdemeanor violation state of Florida law than an ordinance of any, of any city or town, so.
Okay. Stu?
I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
How many calls have we had from 601 North Miramar on noise complaints since we first brought this up? Or since, for the last two months?
Glad you asked that, because I, I did run a report actually today, kind of anticipating that. So the last report I ran was from July 3, 2023, to July 3 of 2024, and we put up the graphics and discussed that. So I went from July 4, 2024 to today. And using 501 North Miramar as an address, we've had eight total calls. None of those involved noise ordinances or noise violations or any kind of disturbances other than one fight on the property, but that was two tenants that were actually there. And then I used 601 North Miramar for the same time period, and we've had two calls there, and neither of those involved any type of noise or violations, or there were two different calls.
Anything to add, Stu?
No, I think it kind of states it, what the level of the problem is. We have a lot of email writers.
Okay. I have one thing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
On that, I disagree that there's implied cause and effect. The people that are writing are suggesting that the council move forward and they're addressing it. It doesn't mean that they're, they have to report it to have a problem. I get you, if someone's pretty motivated, I'll grant that, Stu, they will call, but they're also looking at this process, and it's clear through that that they're trying to see whether something can be handled. So I imagine they're also trying to be patient. I think that trying to be diplomatic is not calling and calling and calling, so if you really think there's a, a direct cause and effect, then you're sending a message to them, and you should tell them, Stu, and respond to them that they should call more often while the process is going on. I don't, I think they're trying to be polite about it, is how I read the emails and those who have contacted. That's just my perception of it.
Yeah, my perception's a little different. I think they're, they're trying to use our code to weaponize an argument. And I do like the way Brett's done this. I think it's, it's fairest to the entire town. Is the chief the most latitude?
I, I'm not privy to these emails. I, I understand that there are, have been several emails that have gone back and forth. I don't, I, I'm not in the email chain, I'm not in the email loop, I'm not receiving phone calls, my comm center's not receiving the noise complaints. I mean, we're a 24/7/365 operation, that's what we do, that is our job. Call us, let us go investigate. If there's nothing, there's nothing. And if, and if there's a priority call going on, we'll backburner it, so we may not catch it as it's going on, but it's Indian Atlantic, and you know, we're, we're steady but not, we're not Melbourne busy. So just give us a call. Yeah, that's, that's our job, that's what we do.
Anything to add, Lauren?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Public comment?
Thank you.
Oh, let's see.
Before we do public comment, if I could read into the record.
Yep.
Some, the emails and correspondence that we've received, and we'll make, we'll make these part of the record. First, from Mr. Jim Seiden, one email dated September 9, 2024, from Ms. Carla Rodiger, one email, one email with a video link, two emails with attachments on September 8, 2024. Total of four emails on, on September the 8, 2024. From Mr. Bob Lowry, one email dated September 10, 2024. From Mr. Dave Boyd, one email, September 10, 2024. From Ms. Lynn Martin, one email dated September 10, 2024. From Ryan Abrams, who is the attorney for Emory Urali, one email dated September 10, 2024. From Ms. Cynthia Berstein, one email dated September 10, 2024. An email from Paul Kowalski dated September 10, 2024. And finally, one from Patrick Sansard, one email dated September 11, 2024. And as I stated, we'll make those part of the record.
John?
John Greco, 418 Seventh Avenue. I guess I just need a civics lesson, and I'll maybe address it to Paul. If this topic is covered under state statute, why are we, why are you going through so much effort for an additional ordinance in the town of Indian Atlantic if it's already covered under state statute?
Well, I think the reason for that is, is that Mr. Seiden had originally suggested adopting a noise ordinance as opposed to a breach of peace statute, state statute. They're, they're different offenses. They may cover the same circumstance, but, or they could, under certain circumstances, cover the same circumstance, but the ordinance is related to noise disturbances. And Mr. Seiden had suggested adopting the ordinance that is currently in use by Brevard County. That ordinance, we went through several meetings examining that, looking at that ordinance. We had it actually put into a form for adoption and inclusion in the, in the code of ordinances for the town. Council, after a lot of public input and a lot of discussion on it, decided to take a different approach, as suggested by Councilman Miller, which was the current ordinance that we have before us tonight. That, in turn, has gone through public comment and previous hearings here. There have been a, a number of tweaks to it, and so we finally have what we're close to having a final product as far as that ordinance. But I think the genesis of it was a request from a resident several, several months ago for noise disturbance regulation.
I, yeah, I followed the whole process for the past couple of months, and this was the first time I heard it was covered under a current state statute. And it just seems like a lot of council's time and efforts have been tied up in writing this ordinance when you can have, you could have fallen back on the statute anyways, and I don't understand the, the difference between the two. And I was just trying to understand that difference and just.
Paul, is it, is it accurate to say that the ordinance maybe lowers the threshold a little bit compared to the state statute, where?
I think, I think the, the ordinance probably focuses more closely in on noise disturbances. The state statute is basically a breach of peace type of ordinance, and there is any number of circumstances that could, could, could probably be encapsulated in that. Also, ironically, the penalties, I'm pretty sure, are, are the same between our code and the state statute, but there's, there's an interesting nuance, and that is, is that the state statute creates a criminal violation, whereas the, the town of Indian Atlantic can't, can't adopt anything that's actually a criminal violation. It's, it's a little different animal, it's viewed as a violation of municipal ordinance. So there's a subtle nuance there from, from a penalty standpoint. The other thing is, is that the state statute is not enforced through code enforcement before the, before our code enforcement board. It's, as the chief outlined, a police investigation followed by a complaint that is filed with the state attorney's office, and then they, they then take it to court and prosecute it. The ordinance gives you two alternatives. You can go, try to go the court route, or alternatively, you can prosecute violations before the town code enforcement board, which I guess localizes the matter a, a little bit more than, certainly than elevating it to a court level.
Okay.
I would just add one, a little color from my perspective. I think the ordinance gives us some local input and clarity on what it is we mean by breach of, breach of peace as it relates to noise, specifically times of day, days of the week.
Okay.
What it is specifically looking for. And it just gives us the ability to kind of color it the way we want to.
Okay.
And helps the police understand what we mean when we say breach of peace.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Jim.
Mike?
Mike Porchevitz, 443 Tenth Avenue. I think what I had to say has pretty much already been covered by, by the chief and everything, but if we can just add this, I sent an email today about 4 o'clock, if we can add this to Mr. Googleman's list.
Yep. Did you guys get that? I didn't get it, but Mike showed it to me before the meeting.
I haven't looked since.
I sent it about two hours before the start, so, no worries, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I think it came through the website, which we know has issues, maybe, or doesn't get directly delivered to me, anyway.
That could be a summer issue to look into.
Yeah, you know an IT guy?
I'm willing to help.
Ever. Ms. Andrew, Carol.
It's been a while since I've been here. Carol Andrew, 906 South Hermona Avenue, next to Orlando Park. There were two things that, I did read what was online about the frequencies and amplitudes, and I could sort of understand that what the frequencies and amplitudes are, but when you have made up your mind and/or if you just retain what you have now, it might be a good idea to put in the newsletter a description of this for the average citizen, so they know when they, they, they're justified in complaining and they don't want to disturb their neighbor or keep them from having fun. We've been here 45 years and, close to, closer to 46, and over the years, I want to thank the police department for the, the few times that we have had some serious complaints, that they have been very effective and handled it very well. Except, and the only exception was when Melbourne has their, their annual event, I think I did call our police department and, and the Melbourne Police Department to complain about the noise. It would be like 12:30 at night, I could hear the country western singer, I could hear the words. It got amplified over the lagoon. But anyway, I hope you would, you know, put in, in, in simple English terms, the kinds of, of disturbances that you're trying to cover, so people won't be complaining about, you know, false things about my neighbor screaming at their child or something. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Personally, I, I think Brett, you did a great job with it. I don't think I have much to add that hasn't already been said. You know, I, I do think the, the three strikes, I was, you know, I was kind of thinking along with you, Lauren, you know, but now that I've heard, you know, chief say, well, you know, it can be escalated without going through the three strikes, I think that might cover, you know, some of the concerns, so that's kind of where I'm at, but. Anything else for a vote? All right, all those in favor of approving, where was it?
2024-10.
2024-10 relating to the regulation of noise, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, passes.
Thank you, Brett.
All right, new business, the Heritage Committee, discuss the town's 75th anniversary. We have Ms. Carol Andrew in again, and Ms. Cindy Earp.
Hi, I'm Cindy Earp. I live at 136 11th Avenue. Each year, we have a panel, and I'm usually moderate it, of people from the city that come and talk about subjects related to the history of town. And this year, we're focusing on the 60s and 70s. They suggested a few people and asked me if I would call, and I ended up with really an interesting panel. We're going to have a retired DCA Judge Bruce Jacobus, Circuit Court retired Judge George Maxwell, Senior Judge Jim Earp, Circuit Court, and County Court Judge Kurt Jacobus. We usually have it here, and we probably will this year. We have standing room only, only at these events, and people discover friends they hadn't seen in a long time. And with all the new people in town, I think it's really going to be an eye opener if we can get some of them here to see the growth that our little town has gone through. I mean, I'm sure they all think it's really growing now, but I don't think they understand what a little sand mound we were many years ago and how much we've grown. These people, as you can imagine, are very large characters and have lots to say, so I'm going to have my job trying to keep them, you know.
Brain then.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to tell them all, though, you know, they're, they're friendly people to me, so I think I'll, I'll be able to do it. But I think it'll be interesting, and it'll be worth your time if one of you guys want to come. I may have to have you read them the fifth beforehand. I know George said I don't think I can tell my stories, but I think you will.
I, I wouldn't.
But we might want to have an officer come check in on us every now and again. Thank you.
Hey.
It's on November 17, a Sunday, from 2 to 4 here, and we usually have light refreshments, so please come join us.
Definitely be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Carol Andrew, same address again. I haven't moved. This was just, I, I missed the meeting, that's why I'm here. But it, I was, I'm here because I was chairman of the 50th Anniversary Committee, which was a rather large event. And I think that talking about the celebration in November triggered the thought that it'll be 75 years in, in 2027, and that you might want to start thinking about it. So the experience of the 50th anniversary was really, I was reading my notes, I just had a certain amount of time, I could have taken weeks going through everything. We had activities all over the town, we had a panel, and out of that, out of that meeting or that event, the Heritage Committee was derived, because there was so much interest in the events that we had in Town Hall. And so we, so we got together with the council after and recommend, made a recommendation, and created the Heritage Committee. And I think their Heritage Committee is willing to do the, the annual types of things, but the special, special holiday, special celebrations, 75th, 50th, 70th, are nicely done with an ad hoc committee perhaps, and you might want to be thinking about people. The 50th was, I, I had a little input, and it was people who really, they weren't on a lot of other things. There were people who, who were connected to the town, some people involved in businesses. Back in the day, there was a lot more political controversy, and we had people from various points of view. I, I do a lot of cheering of things, and I have to say, and nothing detrimental to the Heritage Committee, but of all the groups I work with, that was the easiest group to work with. The day of the event, I could have not been there and it would have run beautifully. Everybody knew what to do and everybody, I didn't have to worry about it. I was here, and other people, somebody else was at the beach, somebody was down at the lagoon. It was a really great event, and I'll be glad to give you more information about it as you, as we get closer and you want to think about forming a committee.
Their names and phone numbers.
Pardon?
The names and phone numbers of the people that did such a good job.
Well, I'm not sure they're all around, still around. I can tell you, they were myself, Ken Bullman, Mark Hart, Zeta Hunter, Lori Colachi, John McNeil, and Joyce Warner. Joyce was an artist, John lived here most of his life, he's moved away, of course, since. And Ken Bullman was here, he and his wife were sort of neutrals. Zeta. Zeta and actually John McNeil were kind of on one of the sides. And I was with like Joyce Warner, the artist, on another side politically. But everybody came together and worked. It was almost too easy. And everybody took on responsibility and lived up to the best action they could have taken to do it. I'll hand this in in case you want to share it. It just reminds you that one of the first two meetings I think we had were opening the meeting to the public, we had public portions, to get ideas from people. So we had a lot of ideas, and we had under two years to put it on, but we started the year before. We didn't wait until January of that year. We started early. And we had different things going on. And there's a painting around here somewhere that Ziggy Oberland, I was involved with Museum of Art and Science at the time, and Ziggy Oberlander was an acquaintance, and he did it, one of the pictures of Town Hall or of the town. So it was bigger than the town. It was amazing.
You mentioned a year. I mean, would you recommend longer than that for the committee?
2002. No, I thought having, we started in 2001, January, February, and the committee was probably chosen December, January. I was trying to pin it down in all my paperwork. I couldn't quite get all this. But, you know, the year before at least. And it didn't strain people because they weren't working a lot at the last minute, because a lot of these people were working. So we met once a month for well over a year, year and a half before the event at least. So it was a very good experience, but I'll be glad to share my notes. We probably have the file in the archives, the town archives as well, if you'd like to look at it. So.
For the record, that's just a bunch of boxes. For the record, that's just a bunch of boxes, the archive.
It's a file. They're files. There's some interesting things there. It's good reading.
Mike, you have anything?
No, I guess the Heritage Committee, we had met with them at one of their meetings. They were talking about this, trying to get, you know, them themselves aren't interested in front-running this event. And most of the people, not most, but several people on that list had passed away, and I can remember 25 years ago. And maybe putting like an ad hoc committee together or something or to start planning maybe beginning of next year. That will give them till November, so it'll be like a year and almost two years to put things together, what they want to do, and going through the boxes or archives.
Well, the nice thing, excuse me, the nice thing was, though, it wasn't a strain because we had plenty of time.
Yeah.
And I think it was Mark Hart, I think he knew the fellow who was the coach at Mel High. They, we started with a 5K race or something in the morning, and I think that was done by the football team or something. Some things, strange things like that, but they brought in other people they knew to manage things. And I think the fact that we had so much time to do it enabled it to be such a really crazy, great event.
So we have the records in the archives?
The Heritage Committee does. I could say, I could work with the Heritage Committee a little bit to get some of those records, and like there's the film that we have.
Yeah, and that's.
That came out of something else that.
Yeah.
Mr. Goldfarb.
The only thing we want is better weather than the 25th, because I can remember it rained quite hard that day.
What time of year was it?
Pardon?
When was it in the year?
Okay.
November.
November, it was.
Yeah.
Do we have records of budget?
They should be all together.
Oh, all our budgets, yeah, we have.
Good question.
And do we have fundraising, just to put framework around it so that.
We'd have to put money in a budget and stuff forward and things like that.
We should establish, I think, as we run up to kickoff, that kind of provides those parameters.
That's why I think we have a preliminary idea. They start somewhere in January, February, where they're kind of going, and then we could.
One other question. If it's an ad hoc committee, is that subject to sunshine?
Pardon? Because what?
Is it, is an ad hoc committee of this nature subject to sunshine rules?
Yes.
Yes.
Just to be clear.
As you reminded, the church participated, the Presbyterian Church. But there was a lot of participation by other people, other groups as well, too.
Yeah, and there's a lot of things. We donate our own snacks usually, or we buy maybe something or get donated some drinks or water or something like that.
Well, this was different. This was planned by the committee, and it was purchased, so.
Yeah.
I have, I still have records. I have quite a few papers. And I'll be glad to help if you can't find something and see if I can find it as we get closer. I don't recommend doing too much more ahead than we did it. It could kind of peter out, and people get tired of it. So it just, the timing was good.
If we have a parade, I'm going to go with a speed bump.
And we have had a parade.
If it's a golf cart parade, we'll let Councilmember Miller take care of that.
Yeah. I'll lay down for it. So maybe next month, we can put it out and start forming the committee. I mean, I know it's two years in advance, but.
I mean, we're thinking.
Well, I'm thinking we get the word out.
Calendar year 25, late calendar year 25?
Because we don't know what.
I think the beginning would be better in 25, because it's November 27. Oh, yeah, I guess, I'm sorry, yeah, later than 25. I'm ahead of myself. I'm thinking, so we, maybe like about November of next year, start, kind of start putting some feelers out there to people, and hey, this is coming around.
You think it'll fill the committee that quickly? I was just thinking, you know, we could establish the committee and just not do anything.
There might be people that you know personally who would be good on the committee. It wasn't composed of people who are already active in the town so much.
Right.
I mean, on the town committees.
Yeah.
It was, it was other people in the community, which was really good. It was crowded. Oh, there was a bus as well. We had a bus.
I like Mark's suggestion. When you go out and recruit, you can often find people who step up or express interest, and that can build some momentum. But then you're also not asking them under pressure, and you have time to, you know, plant the seeds and see what sprouts. So I find recruiting at least earlier, even if you don't form the committee.
Right.
There's some strong interest. If there's not some strong interest, it tells you a little bit about how you have to alter your recruiting because you're going to have to beat the bushes a little bit more.
Yeah. I mean, I guess if it isn't, if we're looking at November 2025, that's three years, so that would be a little early, I guess, but, I mean, the earlier, the better. At least to get the committee formed, you know.
What we could do is also put like on our website and in our next newsletters and stuff.
Yeah.
So what we should do, we should, before we probably put it out there, is to establish what the goals, purpose, and structure of the committee would look like and the obligation and the commitment, at least at some level, so that folks can understand what they're being asked to do.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that you look at the record.
Yeah, no, that's kind of what I.
Where Doug's going.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
There's some good wording there, guide words, I think, yeah.
We shouldn't reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
Which month was the event?
At 73.
November.
Get a new.
November 2002 was the 25th, or 50th, sorry.
Any comments, Brett? Lauren?
No, sir.
Doug?
Yeah, I would just say, I think in the run-up to the run-up, I think it's an opportunity maybe for staff to, and is working with Carol and friends, to kind of refresh, pull into focus some of those visions and structures and stuff, and we can establish as a council what we want out of it. And then maybe for 25, going into 26, hard to think about talking about 2026, but going into 2026, we can establish if we want to have a budget and carry that budget over into 27, so that we have multiple years to kind of build funds of what nature. We're not talking, we're not talking large dollar amount, but a reasonable amount that's consistent with whatever our goals are.
If you want me to work with someone to pull out the records and to look at the most crucial parts, I'll be happy to help if you want.
Thank you.
If you'd like my assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Did Stu have anything? Did you?
Anything to add, Stu?
Thanks. You're working the committee. Now, I was just going to say Denise did something very similar for the 65th. It was very successful, on a smaller scale, but it was great. And by the way, we had a lot of rain. It was.
Yeah, it was a fun day. It was a good time.
What was this for?
The 60th anniversary.
Oh.
Or 65th, if I wish.
60th, 60th, sorry. My daughter was in the cupcake contest. Not her, but the cupcakes she made.
All right, moving on. Item E2, discuss town manager Casey's annual evaluation. Mike, do you have anything?
No, I kind of laid it out in the memo, and just, not in the memo, it's just with my score being overall 3.88, and for the rest of employees, 3.88 would be a 3% raise for senior management. And for all the other positions in town, supervisors and management would be a 2.25% raise.
Stu?
I actually have nothing, unless there's a question.
Doug?
So I understand the part about your salary and your review and merit increase. Mike, what was the part with regards to staff?
Oh, it's just for the general, we do evaluations, merit evaluations for all the employees in town.
Okay, but that's, to be clear, that's separate from the agenda item. I understand the, I understand the topic, but it's separate.
Right. I was just giving you what the standard was on that, separate from that.
Okay, fair enough. So I know we talked about it, maybe it was July, or maybe it was August, and we looked at.
This month.
Last month, at looking forward, not this year, so a little bit skipping ahead, but improving the eval system going forward. So I do want to emphasize that I think it's an opportunity for us to, you know, improve, put some goals in place so that we can collaborate. We could, the council can articulate what those are. We can collaborate to establish what's in those goals then. And then at the, you know, this time next year, we'll have those as a way to measure. Because I know in going through these, obviously, we each have our own way to evaluate it, and that's fine, but in terms of, I'll get with you offline to go through my specifics. Unfortunately, when I type them into the tool, you know, at the time, it appears to be fine, and then it comes out in the PDF with the font size that's in, that is non-legible, and it cuts off the beyond a certain character count. So that's not your fault by any stretch of imagination, so. But I do want to say that in going through and reflecting upon the things we have accomplished this past year, that there were a number of improvements, some of them visually in front of us tonight with regards to the AV system on the, online with the web and with the town staff with communication up and out. So I think that there's been, and that's not just you as a town manager, but as the CEO of the town, that those successes represent the collaboration and leadership from your position, so I do thank you for that. I think we've come a long ways in terms of, with the guidance and input from the public and the council and staff to achieve those things. And we've identified some new things going forward, and I think what will be important going forward into 2025 will be to continue those improvements, but also to identify other areas where we can not just, you know, be storming, and everybody knows the storming, norming, and performing, so that we can go from now where we've been norming, I like to say, in terms of getting some of these things up and running in terms of the technology's been taking care of some things, IT-related as well. And I think now we should, we should be focusing on, as a town and in your role specifically, as in how can we be, you know, performing and bringing more, not just value to the town, but also, you know, empowering our town staff and employees to do their job, do more with their job in improving their condition and training, their workplace condition. So that's kind of where my headspace is at, so I appreciate working with you this past year, and I'll get with you offline for specific feedback.
And I do plan on, it's on the October agenda for the goals to come forward for next year.
Yeah, that, I find, like, this is foreign to me, you know, professionally. I know you guys are a little more, well, not you, because you're kind of smaller office, but you know, you guys, big corporations, and there's like step-by-step, you know, evaluations. You know, I'm not used to that, so I find it very subjective without goals. I'm kind of like, yeah, three, you know, so.
Now I do have a comment.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. The way I had to look at it, for the same reason of not having anything really good, solid metric, was try to take a look at what does the Atlantic look like compared to other municipalities. Now, to do that, you kind of have to normalize it. So we're 3,000 people. We have roughly 15 staff. You know, we have a certain budget number, seven million or so in operating expenses. We have reserves, which should reasonably be good. Well, how does that compare to other municipalities? And we have police fire, you know, 24/7. So I took a look at that, and I went through a lot of communities to come up with this, not just Bovary County, but also a couple in Volusian, a couple in, I'm not sure if Indian River or St. Lucie County, but one of the two. And when I looked at it, and I looked at what we do, I said, damn, we're efficient. We're doing a lot better than most of these other communities are. I mean, some communities in Bovary County, small communities, have $25 million budgets. That's a big number. They have 160 on staff, and they're small communities. So the normalization became a very unscientific approach, but it was a way I had to look at it. So yes, we need goals. That's kind of the, that's what I'm trying to say.
Lauren?
Yeah, I don't want to argue the items or Mike's particular score. I both gave the evaluation. I gave a write-up that I was trying to understand and unravel why I made the choices I did based on objective evidence. I think the opportunity for all of us, I want to build on what Doug said, and Mark, you've sort of touched on it really, really well. I've found, and I've worked for smaller corporate companies, not necessarily a large one, but we found processes that really help develop staff, develop leadership, bring harmony, bring productivity together. And a lot of what it is, is you set objectives, and often then the person writing up, for instance, Mike could write up against his objectives what he thought he did. And it's good because you get the perspective then of the person saying, how well did I perform against these? It gives not only just the form, but context for their perception, which is good. And they may be bringing out, and often I'd read things in my reports where I would realize it would either jog the memory or bring additional definition that would help move towards or understanding why the goal may not have met and where the lessons were learned. That was helpful because then, once it's distributed, you can have against a more objective set of goals. I think one of the challenges we presented to Mike is that we didn't really choose some unified goals. And when that happens, there's nothing wrong with that, but then you are left, for instance, Stu says his methodology or others. Well, that's a challenge to help both Mike and I think staff meet. It's also, by the way, an opportunity to work with the direction of the town, et cetera. Now, that's why you want to do it before the budget, though, because I could empathize with Mike saying, hey, you set these goals and objectives after the budget, and that's a big piece of my resource, right? The CEO of a company makes decisions about staff hiring, deployment, resources for them that takes money to enable them, of course, because Mike himself, while he delivers on some things, isn't the only person, right? He runs the organization. So I would encourage, and I won't be sitting here next time for this, but I would strongly encourage council to talk about these particular objectives. That's what you're really saying, Doug, and you've come out even, I think, a more mature and probably better evaluation process than I've experienced in my life, but you can speak to that. And by the way, it's not an edict down to Mike. It's usually discussed as these are the goals. He may bring his goals. There's a back and forth. So in the case of council with sunshine law, you're probably going to have to spend a little one-on-one time, but it's actually good, right? One-on-one is required by some, but you'll all discuss, and then Mike feel, you get buy-in, right? At the end of the day, I've seen great productivity and great support and happiness by staff when both sides have buy-in. And sure, things can happen, right? Things do go sideways in the company, and you can adjust for that, knowing, even though I didn't hit this goal, we agreed that this, this, and this happened. And sometimes the scores are adjusted based on when a monkey wrench, sometimes it actually goes up because you get the monkey wrench, you address the monkey wrench, and it was even harder, and you exceeded expectations. So I would encourage council to look at it that way as well, knowing we have a bunch of things that are brought by Mike or are reactive in nature. But if the council doesn't have objectives that are bought, buy-in with Mike, then the challenge is accountability. How do you hold one accountable? So that was the struggle I had last time, and I tried to make it shorter, Mike. I really focused in on what I felt were the core issues. I know you and I sat down last year and walked through them. I decided this year that, based on what I saw either done or not done related to them, I just focus in on some both areas of strength and concerns. I'm always willing to sit down and discuss further my perception, and also, like we do when you have those, is you receive that perception back yourself. The other thing we may do, and maybe this is one step too far for the council, but I will mention it for those who are going to be here. Another neat thing, and it's sort of, they call it a 360. If you just Google sort of what a 360, you get some staff members also evaluating. And what's interesting, it brings a different perspective, and you'll often see different strengths or really good things that you didn't know that may help you both praise or support challenges. And it's a really gutsy thing to do, but those that are really, I've learned a lot from 360 stuff, because sometimes it's harder to read because you didn't see. cause sometimes it's harder to read, because you didn't see it in yourself. So, what it helps is your awareness. And all this leads down to the same thing that we all feel. Everyone in this room, certainly Mike and, and council and staff, which is caring for the town, and that means part of your leadership development and hitting your goals ought to be important. Because if you hit the goals, you're smiling, we can both smile and work through them, and residents are satisfied. So, I hope that's helpful. I think that's really the option next year, is not just the form itself, but those objectives. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Think it's helpful, or?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Brett, you got anything?
Oh, yeah, a little bit. My only question about that would be, is, I mean, the only real objectives you can do is pretty much on the fiscal management, right? Isn't there anything else still?
I'll let Doug answer that one.
I actually put five minutes of thought into it this afternoon, just to refresh my memory. Obviously, budgetary is one. It's very easy to measure performance against budget. Maybe not easy, but it, Jennifer's, she can tell me it's not as easy. But there's also other things that the town asks to do, whether it's meeting retention policies, staffing, right? It could be that we are achieving certain goals that we have identified as a priority, that we're in compliance with our capital improvement plan, that we're meeting those objectives. Grant, grant writing, maybe we wanna have an objective, just throwing it out there. That we wanna have a grant for a new project or for the peer, or that we wanna, you know, those are the kinda things that we can set as objectives. They could be recurring, and we just change the specific level. Or you could have a, a specific objective for that year, because we identified that's critical. We could put a 75th Heritage Committee on there for, you know, as an objective. Not saying that would be the case, but that, that would be an example of something that you could put on there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think outside of fiscal management, trying to create objective criteria is dangerous. Because then, then you're gonna have somebody trying to meet a certain objective that may not be appropriate as things evolve in its organic structure, right? I mean, here, here are the headings, so everyone else knows. Organizational management, fiscal management, council relations. You've responded to...
Well, these are...
Ten out of my 15 emails, like, intergovernmental, and then community relations. So, I just think it's inherently gonna be subjective, and that's just the way it is. I think it really comes down to, you know, this was foreign to me in the sense that, this is my first year on council. Also, you know, I'm a partner in a law firm, you know, my own office. I don't have a boss, I am my own boss, my clients are my boss. So, I haven't done one of these, or been subjected to one of these. My, my internship with Marriott going into my senior year of college, the last time I've done one of these. So, I think that, yeah, it's just, it's, I think it comes, we get better at it, right? The more times, like, Stu's probably much better at, you know, and I do like your criteria, kinda thinking about that in the big picture. You know, just based upon your experience being on council, knowing what to look out for, and kinda having in mind certain, I guess, experiences or examples that you're looking for. That's what I did. I essentially went down, I'm trying like, it's like, all right, have I seen Mike do, yeah, yeah, okay, yep, yep. And then, you know, kinda graded it out how I felt. But I do, I, I kinda wanna follow up on what Stu said. I think that's a really good and fair point. I wouldn't necessarily put five down the line, but I respect that. But, in the big picture, you know, Mike does a lot, and our staff, they do a lot with a little, compared to a lot of other municipalities, you know, I mean, particularly like Satellite Beach. And, and if you think about it, I mean, we kinda get a lot of focus, too, because of Fifth Ave, and, you know, if you're coming over from Kissimmee, or, you know, St. Cloud, anywhere, you just head to the beach, you're coming over here. So, you know, we have a lot of stress on our area. And, you know, the little amount of, of, we all know, the vast majority of the budget, right, goes to, to the, to the police and, and fire, which is, which is great. But, but, yeah, I think Mike does a really good job overall with what he has to, he has to work with. So, and I think I'll do probably, be a little bit more critical maybe in the future, now having another year on council and being able to kinda create maybe my own little subjective, objective measurements, so.
Cool. Anything else?
Nothing, Stanford.
Mike, you got anything?
No, I mean, some of the things, like I said, when you talk about, you know, like addresses and complaints in professional manner and stuff, you know, you don't realize how many times a day I deal with citizens and stuff. And people walk in here, and I go out and see them, where other managers are isolated and won't go see them and things.
Sure.
You know, today, I think I had like four or five emails that came in from different things and dealing with citizens.
Yep, it can, it can get hard.
Customer services.
Yeah.
And that's one of those things where we're only ever gonna hear people being frustrated. We're not gonna hear the nine times out of 10 that it's fine, so.
All right, moving on, Resolution 112024.
Yeah.
Oh, with the vote?
Yeah.
What's the motion on the floor, please?
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, accept the performance evaluation of the town manager for the period of July 12, 2023 through July 12 of 2024, with an approving merit increase of two and a half percent.
Is there a second? Second. Public comment? Mike?
Mike Porchevitz, 443 Tenth Avenue. Been a resident here for 30 years and have served on the council with Mike's predecessor. Mike's ability to interact with the, the residents of this town is superb, in my opinion. I just wanted to share that, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Nope, all right. All those in favor of approving the motion by Doug, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Nay.
All right. Four to one. All right, moving on, Resolution 112024, beach parking permit fees. Mike, this was you, right?
Yeah. So, with the beach park, beach parking fees, we have not raised the fees in a while, and we've seen the permit use go up as we've increased the cost. So, we're asking to go from the $40 to $50. It also would allow, like I said, elected official or board members get two passes and things, and that would be under the number that you have to report to the ethics, cause it's $100 or more, or more than $100, sorry, as the statute reads, so we're still keeping on that. But we're just looking to come in, you know, trying to fund everything down there and stuff, and where we're weighing out. And we change it to $40 after, after, was it February?
May.
May.
Yeah.
Sorry. That's right, sorry, May. And then, with that, we'd be similar to other places with their charging. They're charging a lot more from $75 to $100 for non-residents. We run into an issue where Satellite Beach, they use general funds to manage their beach areas. We don't use general funds. So, what they're doing is, for every parking permit they issue to a citizen, they're putting more money in what it would be for that. And they have separate areas, too, like we do. They have Hightower Beach and Pelican, which are leased from the county and the state, so they go back and forth with that. And then they have the different parking permit for the residents of Indy Atlantic, or Satellite Beach. Melbourne Beach, they sell them, they're 100, I believe they're $100 now. If you're a non-resident, they give it to residents, but they've been using general funds to maintain it all those years. In fact, they've done all their parks, so like, you go park at Reichman, you get to either pay or have a sticker. And they're actually using that money to help fund all their parks now. They're not even, they free some money up into their general funds to do that.
Yeah, a lot of people don't realize that there's zero tax dollars that go to the upkeep of the enterprise, which is the beach.
And we have enterprise funds where it's a nonprofit, no, we spend what we make down there.
Right. Is there a motion? From council?
Go ahead. Go, Doug.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution relating to park, beach parking permit fees increasing from 40 to 50.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comment?
Yeah, I had some. So, Mike and I had a little bit of an email exchange. So, just for, you know, my train of thought when, when this was put on the, on here, I understand the price increase. It is a source of revenue for the town that is then used for, you know, upkeep of the, of the park. In 2022, 23, we sold just shy of 2,000, we have about 6,800K in beach park, beach permit passes sold. In 23, 24, people were starting to catch on, we sold about 250 more than we did the year before. So, that was just 2,239, and we made 78,860, so. So, it gives you an idea of just where it is in terms of budgetary line items. So, it's not nothing, but it's not huge in terms of comparison to the actual parking meters, where we make 500K a year, roughly, around that.
Yeah.
So, my initial thought there was, well, why can't we provide these parking passes free to our residents, right? They pay the taxes, let's, let's, one of the benefits we do have is we are the gateway to the beaches for Kissimmee and All Points West on 192. Could we, you know, source, source these out as free? We are limited in our ability to do that because of the, because of Nance Park, right? Nance Park, if you, anybody recall, it used to be where, where they were, it was separate for the, the parking pass, where we couldn't use the parking pass in, in Nance Park. And now we've, now we are able to, the beach park pass works, Nance or the boardwalk. By, by county, because the county owns, owns those parks, we are not able to differentiate between our residents and non-Indy Atlantic residents with regards to the beach parking passes. Our hands are a little bit tied there. I don't feel the need that we wanna differentiate between the two. What, I guess what the, and we do obviously allow for EVs to park for free. So, that's kind of a plus up for residents and adjacent residents. I guess my, my pushback here or caution would be that we need to be very thoughtful about how this would be impactful to our, our residents. It is a small increase that we would get, gain from fees for, for non-residents that buy beach parking passes, if, and our residents for that matter. But it, it's not, and we haven't had a chance to talk about what this would enable us to do. But I, I just, I guess from a, from a resident standpoint, and from somebody who doesn't have to pay for theirs, actually, I do have to pay for one, cause I have three right now. Parking passes, you know, I just feel like it's, from a resident standpoint, I, I don't feel that we're, we're gonna get any more for it as a resident.
Right.
So, and, but it's not, it's not clear to me what, what we'd be getting more from there, so.
May I?
Mm-hmm.
You know, one of the interesting parts about the parking passes, we think about from a resident or from a local perspective. A lot of tourists who are here for a week finds less expensive to buy the parking pass than to sit there and pay $3.50 an hour to park at the beach, especially if they're gonna come several days. So, a good number of those are coming from outside the state, outside of the area. And it's not using a lot of resource, because they're only here for a week or two. Just thought.
So, that is true, we do have some of those. And we also gotta be careful, too, cause of the beach renourishment and how we handle things. Cause, for example, when Melbourne Beach was not gonna issue any parking permits, but to Melbourne Beach people and stuff, the county threatened in the state to, you know, pull away the renourishment. So, there's some, a lot of things gotta be careful on and things like that. But we do have some people just come in, cause it's cheaper than the, even when it's $2.50 an hour, they came in and, cause they, they're here for a week, or they're going down there for, you know, five hours a day, for three days, they've already made their money. Especially, it's only $30 right now. So, we've had people coming in December, they'll buy passes in December still.
For $30?
Yeah.
It's about a week, Christmas or something.
Lauren?
Thank you. Mike, could you share with us what drove up the costs, please?
Drove up the cost of the parking permits?
Yeah, you mentioned, one of the reasons for the increase was the, the, the cost. Are you talking...
The cost of the maintenance of the whole area down there.
Okay, so one is the cost of the maintenance, okay?
Yeah, we realize it's not a, cause you're only talking, you know, $10, you're not talking a great amount of money when you're talking, you're talking, you know, less than $30,000. And staff had pushed this to me last year, and I held off on it last year, and it came back this year from staff, and that's why we're presenting it.
Okay, so, so the cost of the maintenance of the area is the focus of why you wanna generate more revenue?
Yes, with the cost of maintenance and, you know, some things that council has mentioned they like to do down there.
Okay, so what were the, what were the cost estimates to cover? So, what were the cost numbers that you said, hey, this is the amount we need to recover more because of the, this shortfall?
You mean the cost down at the, for maintenance down there?
Yeah, you said the costs are gonna go up, maintenance of the area, staff recommended.
We've had a raising cost.
I imagine they said there's a certain amount that they'd like to recover.
Right. So, there, it, just to increase cost of everything down there, we've had it. And that's why we've raised the parking meters to 3.50, with all, other places and things. I got a quota in today to replace the bathrooms, and that's just a half million dollars. So, I mean, we've got projects down there that, you know, in repairing the boardwalk, it's about $10,000 a crossover. We've done most of them, we've got a few more left to do, you know, the whole maintenance of the area.
Okay, so, I noticed, and from my viewpoint, you're, you're staying very high level and not getting specific on the amounts. So, let me, let me ask another way that may be helpful. How much more revenue do you expect to collect each year if this were to go into place? So, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to look at it from a business perspective, right? You're looking fiscally at it. If we expect to make this amount of revenue, does it cover these additional expenditures or, or rise in costs?
It doesn't, and I previously answered, it would be a little less than $30,000 a year based on the numbers of permits. I said that a few minutes ago.
Okay, so, Mike, please bear with me, I'm trying to, I, I wanna process it myself, too, and, and...
Okay.
I'm not all, you know, my job is to, to understand, and I may not get it as fast as others, and that's okay. My job is to, to understand. So, this raises 30,000 per year in revenue, but you just mentioned some things much higher than that amount.
Correct.
Okay. I share also with Doug the, the concern that, is there juice worth the squeeze, given? I know we're in a tough spot, that we, residents have asked why frequently, you know, when I went door-to-door, and other times, they ask why we don't get passes for free, and then you can explain this thing. But if we have $30,000, to me, that's a very small bite out of the amount. It's not insignificant, but it's not close to the amount of, of money that we're, we're finding. So, this is an exact area where you'd make a, a measurement for grants appropriation. Other ways, we develop the capabilities to go find money besides raise a fee to residents that I think is not going to be very receptive. I understand why you're bringing it, Mike, I just don't see the numbers contributing.
If I may, you need to really look at the two enterprise zones. The idea of an enterprise zone is really to break, break even. You don't wanna make money in the enterprise, you actually can't transfer the monies to the general fund.
I'm very familiar with that, Stu.
Exactly. So, our one source of revenue becomes parking. And that's the key issue. And by the way, the county has a, wants to really raise the lifeguard fees. We got one, we got away with it this year, we've got these, but what's gonna happen in the next year? Five years. Can we continue?
Yeah, I'll, I'll respond to that, because raising the fees also got us into trouble, some commissioners deciding to hold Nance Park as well. So, remember, you know as well as I do on the other side, that raising these fees may actually do the opposite, which is cause the ire of some of the county commissioners.
Oh, it will.
So, well, then, then, you know, you talk about taking a larger view of things, I wanna take that. You know, angering residents and angering the commissioners for $30,000 may not be the best tact for the enterprise zones.
Well, the two particular commissioners will term out, so that's two of the three are, are terming out. The, so, I don't know who's gonna replace them, I don't know what their policies will be. I think it's a foolish, in the county's point, to double taxes. Because, you know, we're paying tax to the county for, for beach, then they want to tax us again for monies that we bring in to maintain our portion of the beach. They don't, they don't help us maintain it. They don't contribute a penny.
You and I have common ground there. That is a problem, and we've been unable to surmount that, working with our commissioners and our local interests.
Exactly. So, like everything, it's a little more complicated when you dig into it.
Brett?
Apologize if I didn't fully catch you. Did you say that Melbourne Beaches is 100?
If you're a non-resident.
If you're a non-resident, it's 100.
They're giving free to residents.
Okay.
They're not operating enterprise zones like we are.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, they don't have the mess. I'm surprised you're allowed to get away with that, the difference between resident and non-resident. And then what's Satellite Beach?
They're giving them free to residents. At the county park, you, anybody get them free at Lisbon Bovard County? So, for Hightower and that, and they charge, I think it's 75 or 100 for their permits. Cocoa Beach charges like 20 bucks... Cocoa Beach charges like twenty bucks for residents, and it's seventy-five dollars for non-residents. And this also helps cover besides, like, the projects. Remember, we have increased cost every year of the CPI down there, so between the cost of employees and stuff, if you just take roughly what our budget is and you take four percent, that's about thirty-five thousand dollars right there, an increase we expect next year.
Right.
So we're trying to keep up with all that stuff, too, the maintenance and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly, or trying to, you know, find additional revenue wherever we can. Um, and then remind me, where are we at right now, again?
Right now, we're charging forty dollars for a twelve-month period, and after June first, it's thirty dollars for the rest of the year. It runs calendar year from January first to the end of December.
Right. Um, well, I do know that every meeting we have, there are constantly announcements for positions on committees and boards that we're trying to fill. So this will hopefully be a, a good motivator to, to serve the town and get a free, get a free parking pass for the beach. I will say, you know, anecdotally, where I, the portion of town that I live, Tampa Ave is the public beach access, and I would say the vast majority of people that attend the beach there do so either through a low-speed vehicle, a golf cart, or riding their bike up there. And both of those don't take a parking permit, so I don't know how much, this is a burden on our townspeople, especially only a ten-dollar increase, and we know that we need the money, so I support it. Public comment? All right. I'm kind of torn on it, honestly. I'm kind of with you guys thinking it's, is it worth it to squeeze, but we do kind of need the money, but.
Thirty grand is thirty grand, that's a lot of money.
Well, I, I just thought, is, is there an option to charge a resident fee and a non-resident fee? But I think the answer is no.
Right.
I asked for free, which was, I was going for the golden ring, but, 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 so that, that handcuffs you there, at least in terms of being able to differentiate.
Right.
So I would, as a, at least as a minimum, before I could get behind it, I think I would like to understand, you know, more clinically, what, what it, what it would be funding. I, I do recognize where you have on the docket tonight, another fifteen K ask for, you know, for projects, because that stuff corrodes and the beach house, you know, was falling over, and it's not going to stop, unless I checked, so. I just want to, want to challenge us to be creative in terms of how we, how we look to appropriate funds for, for the, you know, our Nance and boardwalk, so.
Is there more information that you would like to see before voting?
Uh, well, if we're going to vote tonight, then, yeah, I would, I'll vote against it, but, um, and, but that doesn't mean we can't revisit it, this is just, this is just a fee structure. But if, if we brought forward a compelling reason with, that says these are the projects, additional things we're going, we're just going to fund it to, and this is why, you know, to back, to back it up, it's, I think the data exists to do it, we just, it's not frontless.
They have one thing, Doug, along that. When I'm listening to, from a business decision, I heard that the price is going up about thirty-five thousand per year. You, you stated a percentage and then goes up. And I understand the value of the enterprise zones, but you can see the costs are outstripping the methodology to fund it.
Because otherwise, we're back here again. Every year, every year, we're going to be back here again.
So, so what we're doing, so what I'm pushing is not against the idea of funding something properly, the question, and you said it better than I could. Challenge on how to be a creative, creative on how to really appropriate funds, and we may have to look at the enterprise zones and how they're funded, because we also can't hamstring, Mike, delivering a certain amount of services and underfunding it, and we can only visit potentially parking so far without aggravating a range of things we've already discussed. So I'm looking for that more robust understanding. This goes back to a little bit of the long-term planning, and yes, putting some numbers down and coming up with likely scenarios of how we ought to address this. I'd love to say costs are actually decreasing or are level, and therefore we don't have to, to have that much more income, but that's not the, the situation I'm hearing. So when I put on the, the, the fiscal management hat, I hear there's not a, there's a sustainability issue, so it's got to be solved. There's a bigger issue than just saying this is the amount, from my viewpoint. And I think that discussion can happen and we can revisit it. I'm open to this, as long as we have a solution that can work for our mutual goals for these areas. I know for the, the time being, it ran very well without additional revenue streams, I'm not hearing that now. And of course, the county has exacerbated the situation for us.
Yeah, and this is, this is for calendar year twenty twenty-five, so we.
Oh, I will say this, kind of important, if we don't pass it tonight, we do have that additional money already figured in next year's budget for enterprise, we're going to have to go through and cut some items for next year.
That's what I'm looking at right now.
Okay, but in terms of a timeliness, my point was going to be that, in terms of a timeliness of when we.
We'd start, yeah, we'd have to, no, we start selling permits October first.
Okay.
Or December.
I mean, December first, sorry, yeah.
Okay, so from a timeliness standpoint, there is a period of time, because I think, we were, they're printed, they don't have a price tag on them, you just have to make sure Victoria in the front office knows what we're charging.
But yeah, so we'd come back at the final budget workshop with a change to the enterprise budgets, with the amount we figured in for the, having to remove some money from areas and projects.
Well, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a, like, a case one and case two, there's a with and a without case, which the case with is obviously transparent, it's in front of us, it's in the budget, but without, this is what it would be pulled back. But then from a going-forward standpoint, one of the things we have on the docket tonight is the, is the proposal for the, for the boardwalk, replacing some of the boardwalk wood structure with a cement structure. Recurring costs for maintaining a cement structure, kind of believe is significantly less than a, than a wooden structure, maybe it does, that recurring cost in the near term is not really that much, but perhaps those are the kind of things that we need to identify to mitigate the recurring inflationary pressures that are going to continue to push on the budget, so that not only would we be looking to right-size the revenue on the income side, but we'd be right-sizing the expense of the outcome side, identifying where we're spending all the money, and how can we remediate those in a meaningful manner, in a, in, recognizing some of those take money to remediate, because you can't just magically make it disappear, you have to replace it with something, but that something could be something that has a long, a, a lower long, long-term cost.
Yeah, that's what we're looking into, but it, it's, like I said, if it's not approved tonight, we come back with a budget with that out and, and removing it, and if it got approved after the date, then we'd have to just do it, a budget adjustment and things.
Is there anything in mind, that you have in mind specifically that would get whacked immediately?
I have to look at where it's at, I mean, it could be anywhere from, you know, because we're kind of stuck on where the maintenance is and salaries and stuff, so, I mean, it could be from, you know, the engineering portion we funded extra to planners and, you know, coming out where that comes from.
If I may, this year, we're, we budgeted ten thousand on professional services, next year, twenty thousand. This is enterprise two. Audit, I think it's gone up, it's basically doubled, it was a thousand, this year, it's twenty-five hundred next year. So a lot of this is going up, and we just have to recover those costs, or not, close the beach, you know, which obviously we're not going to do. Little things like computer maintenance was a thousand dollars this year, budgeted three thousand next year. It's a.
The parking fees go directly to the enterprise fund, right?
Pardon?
The parking fees go directly to the enterprise fund, correct?
Oh, the parking fees go directly to the enterprise fund, and we're looking at things like, when you talk about sustainability, like, we went from meters, which were horrible with quarters and stuff, to kiosk. Well, we're slowly replacing, you know, the kiosk, when they break and go down fully or major repair, we're just going to the pay app, so, and other towns are doing that now, too. So we're looking, instead of having to spend six to seven thousand dollars per kiosk, we're down to just a kiosk in Nance Park and, like, well, besides the one that was taken out of the boardwalk, we did buy that one because insurance paid to replace it, but we only have like another, the, what, how many kiosks do we have, Joe?
Right now, we have a total of seven.
So, yeah.
You know, another typical example is the crossover maintenance. Fifty-five thousand this year, budgeted ninety-one thousand, basically ninety-two thousand next year.
Yeah.
We can't get around this, we live in a very corrosive environment. And unfortunately, and I'm just as guilty as everybody, we don't look at the enterprise funds very carefully when we do the budget process, because they do tend to wash.
I mean, when it comes out, we're talking about ten dollars for the year for our residents. We have this, the highest per capita income out of any municipality in the county, this is nineteen cents a week, but it can be a thirty thousand dollar benefit. I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer, you kidding me, like, we can't afford ten dollars?
Wasn't, until we just had this, this last five-minute conversation, I, this, I wasn't aware that this was baked in the budget.
Even if it wasn't, it's, it's an extra thirty thousand dollars for ten dollars a house.
It was presented as a ten-dollar increase, as a ten, that was it. It wasn't, this is necessary to, to match the budget. So that, when I, what I said earlier was not informed by the fact that we needed this to meet the, what we proposed in the budget. That's a different conversation.
I agree, but I'm saying without that, remove that, even if we didn't, even if it was just going projected forward, I, I still, we know that we need additional funds for every drunk guy that's going to run into the boardwalk every other week, but, you know, the amount of population that's increasing in the central Florida area, I mean, it's just putting more pressure, more resources that we need for that area. I mean, again, we've talked about it before with Kissimmee and Osceola, it's a great pipeline to the beach, that's not decreasing. We need resources to maintain that, so.
Yeah, I understand.
I'll open up public comment again, anyone?
Sure, I'm outside, don't be lucky.
No, that, no, that's fine.
Good evening, Emery Ureli, five oh one North Miramar in DeLaney. It's a tough call. I'm really familiar with beach areas, I've been in Deerfield Beach for twenty-five years, and I've watched the town grow from a, a two-pump gas station was my neighbor on the beach, and today it's a beautiful restaurant, probably about eight thousand square feet with thousands of people that visit there. People are coming from all over. As west grew, yeah, from, I thought Coconut Creek was east, there are cities, I don't even know what the names are any longer, there's, it's just, it goes out for miles and miles and miles and miles, guys. No matter what we do, people will keep coming to the beach, and you're all right. In the next five years, the plan, what we see today, we're going to need more officers, we're going to need, we're going to need a lot. And that beach is beautiful, and today, you look at it, and most people, if they come from down south, would say, hey, it looks kind of junky. The boardwalk's terrible, the vegetation's not trimmed, that's our jewel. I mean, that's absolutely our jewel, and I, you know, and to me, you know, I, in the process, I'm purchasing the Wendy's, okay? And I'm an advocate of cleaning that whole boardwalk up.
I think you'll like what we have next month.
I hope so, and I'm there, I'm there to work together with you guys, you know, whatever it is, volunteer, sweat, and I really think for ten bucks, that's a mistake not to get in the budget. Thank you.
Cool, thank you. Yeah, next month, we have something. Anybody else? All right.
We have a, we have a risk. If we don't adopt it, and it's factored into the budget, we're going to be paying the difference out of general fund, which means we're going to have to hit other areas we're not going to like. I'm kind of in favor of doing it this one, to be honest. We're just late in the budget process. Hate to try to rebalance it for thirty thousand dollars.
Yep. All those in favor of approving Resolution eleven twenty-two-four beach parking permit fees, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Three to two. All right, Joe, you pulled the allowance off?
Yeah.
Okay, somebody did. All right, item five, discuss approval, yeah, discuss and approve the Coastal Florida Police Benevolent Association Agreement Amendment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we sent the negotiations and stuff, and I need to make the correction on the form, I, councilman right, pointed out, actually, it's a typo on the, from six-point five to six-point-six percent coal, and what it is doing is our, with Melbourne Beaches giving a raise to their officers, our starting salary would have been the lowest in the county, and be more competitive and things, that's where we came up with the, giving the fifteen-hundred dollars in a raise, which is already in the contract from last year, so that's nothing new. But they were asking for seven percent at one point, and we were offering four percent, and we came back with an agreement to offer six-point-six percent on top of that, but not doing merit this year, so it kind of balances out and doesn't affect our budget drastically, and it would raise every bargaining member, the starting salary up, and the members in-between and the ending salaries. So we're more competitive with other police agents trying to hire people from our communications officers to our police officers.
Comment?
Mike, Monday, they mentioned the average, what was it, the, the average salary, or some better, better term of that?
About sixty-two K.
Yeah.
Yeah, the.
It was just under.
Yeah, the median salary in Bavard County.
A median average salary in Bavard County. How close are we?
That'll, we'll be at fifty thousand for an officer.
That's the start.
Fifty thousand and like one hundred.
That's not the median average for the.
Is that the median?
For your officers?
That's the starting officers, but there's also capabilities in there. So they have degrees, they get extra money, they have advanced training, they come from an experience, plus if they have experience, we pay extra for experience and stuff.
So that puts us somewhere close to the mean average?
No, we're still at the mean average and stuff, but the officers that are here are making over that, and they're making more like.
That's what I'm concerned, that's.
Yeah. Starting, starting salary, yeah.
I'm more concerned with employee retention.
Yeah.
Recruitment's a whole different story.
So with this, it, like I said, it's why we built it in, it's going to go to all the employees, they'll get that too, that fifteen hundred this year, and plus the cost of living that we've negotiated, plus next year, we're going to, cost of living we negotiate and stuff with, similar to what we did with the fire department and their contract last month, but there was a full contract, this is just one item open.
Okay.
Doug, comment?
No comment.
Lauren?
No.
Right. Public comment? All right, is there a motion?
I'll move to accept the, let me get to the right language here. Approve Amendment one to the agreement with the Coastal Florida Benevolent Association, resulting in the cost of living adjustment of one thousand five hundred dollars plus six and a half, six-point-six percent.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Will be provided in fiscal year twenty-five.
All right, Lauren seconded it. All those in favor of approving the?
Public comment?
Oh, okay, public comment?
We did that.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We did that after the motion.
Oh, it has to be after?
Okay.
All right, all those in favor of approving the Police Benevolent Association Agreement Amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, unanimous. Two more items. Discuss approved removal of the old boardwalk and installation of concrete at the Nance Park bathroom and boardwalk area supporting documents will be available at the meeting.
I'm not, Joe's going to handle this, it's the, we took care of the breezeway, removed all of the area that was rotted and stuff, and the bathrooms are still there, and we repaired it, it's back open again, but the area where the showers are, basically, and that wooded area, is just rotted away and needs to be replaced, and Joe would give me an estimate of like a hundred thousand dollars to do it with, replacing that and a crossover and things, where this comes in, what's the amount, Joe?
Fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen-five.
Fifteen-five.
Yeah, so fifteen-five to replace it, and it's not going to be, we're going to have to go back and keep doing it over and over and over, like we're dealing with the trex board or the wood rotting out and things.
Now, keep in mind, we'll still have the crossovers done and track decking, so that it, that'll never go away, but I think this will be a nice addition when we bring in the professional planner to do a new transition of our boardwalk. And like you said, concrete is the best thing to put in there, that way you're not worrying about replacing wood, track decking, hardware, it gets very expensive. Like I said, it was a hundred and two thousand dollars just to do wood and decking, we got this for like a twentieth of the cost.
Yeah. Now, we can never do the crossover, the DEP, because we've checked into it, trying to do the crossover and cement. They won't allow us to do that.
Is there a motion?
So I'll make a motion that we approve, I don't know, who are we approving? The request for fifteen thousand five hundred dollars for the removal of decking PT boards to include disposal cocoa landfill, filled dirt, pouring a thousand square feet of six-inch thick concrete with fiber behind Nance Park bathrooms, restrooms.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brett, any comments? Lauren?
Let me understand, Joe, make sure I've got my notes. You're saying to replace as-is or reasonably similar is a hundred thousand dollars?
Hundred and two, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And, and the choice of materials brought it down to fifteen thousand?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And that's a, that's a, a choice of materials to have costs down as well as your maintenance costs, you're expecting to be far lower as well?
Absolutely. It'll be less maintenance.
Appreciate the cost consciousness on, on that and the, the up, you know, the creative thinking. How is this area used? Once it, once it's poured and done, how will people who are on this area, what will, is it just traversing a walkway? I know you've got the little white area on here. Is it used for anything else?
No, just, it's just the walkway from the restrooms and the boardwalk coming north and south to go to the beach.
Okay, so it's just a transit area?
Just a transition area.
Also, there's showers there, right?
Uh, yes, we are moving the showers to the north of the restrooms of, um, of the men's restroom, and that'll be coming soon.
Okay, but is, is that gonna be on the, sorry, Lauren, I want to-
No, no, you're asking, right, long lines, continue.
I was gonna say, and that, would that, those, those wash facilities be on the pad, the concrete pad adjacent to the-
Yeah, we're gonna pour a thirteen-foot diameter pad.
Okay, cause currently, they're on the existing rotted wood structure?
Actually, there is concrete there, sir. Just, yeah.
You can just call me councilman, I prefer that.
Absolutely.
I don't have any more questions. Thanks, Doug, for following up. Same questions you used.
Just to be clear, we're, I read the, the item, and I got a little nervous. We're not replacing the entire boardwalk. We're replacing, this is more for the record for the YouTube. We're replacing the, the walkway between the Nance Park restrooms and the, behind the bat, restrooms and the crossover.
Not including crossover.
Not, no, to the crossover.
To the crossover, yes, sir.
The walkway from-
Yes.
The bathrooms to the crossover.
Yes, sir.
East side of the bathroom.
Yes, correct, okay. The rest, we're not repla, ripping up the rest of the boardwalk and replacing it with concrete at this meeting.
Now, our second phase after-
If we do it for fifteen, that would be great, but yeah.
Not for fifteen five.
Our second phase of the project will be after turtle season. We will be removing the decking at the crossover to make it to a ramp rather than stairs.
Right.
Okay.
Which would make more sense with the beach buggy being right there.
Right, and that's in the current twenty-five-
Yes, sir.
-fiscal budget.
Yeah.
Anything else, Doug? Stu? Public comment? All right, all those in favor of approving the removal of the old boardwalk and installation of concrete at the Nance Park bathroom boardwalk area, say aye.
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 All opposed? Unanimous. All right, final item, discuss approve the repairs to the boardwalk from the July fifth, twenty twenty-four crash damage. Joe, this is your-
Oh, wait, I'm about to tell you. So we've been in, um, received money from the insurance company, a little over thirty thousand dollars, and that included we're in the kiosk and stuff, and making these repairs with the estimate we got in would allow us, um, basically, we're gonna be just right at that thirty thousand dollars. So we're just trying to put it back to where it was, make it safe.
Everything's covered, cost-wise?
Yeah. And Joe, you can explain a little bit more? Boardwalk area crash.
So on this repair that they're gonna install nine steel bollards, which hopefully is gonna stop the, um, this accidents from happening. So, um, it, it came in a lot cheaper than we thought, from what we, from the insurance company, I think at nineteen thousand four fifteen.
Plus, we'll replace it back with the, one planter that was destroyed, we have to rebuild, so that's part of the money, too. But, and then the one that wasn't destroyed, we'll put those little planters back, kinda cover the bollard area of that things.
How deep are those bollards? Do we know?
How what?
How deep do they go?
They put a breakout right on the drawing, if you wanna look, it's right here.
And say, I'm gonna be six inches.
Yep.
And they are, it looks like about six-inch diameter concrete, galvanized steel pipe.
Galvanized steel. Looks like they're going to bound about, close to six feet, just a little shy, I think.
The other total heights, they're four foot and four inches above ground, and then three foot six inches below ground.
Mm-hmm.
And steel galvanized pipe with concrete.
Yeah, I was just wondering. Uh, is there a motion?
Should we put them in front of the planters? The planters are gonna keep getting destroyed, aren't they?
We'll, we'll, we'll make a motion, and we'll have a good talk. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Yeah.
Robert's rules of orders is a guideline, not strictly followed.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make the motion. So the motion is to, let's, let me go to the, all right. Thank you. So to, the motion is to repair access number six boardwalk repairs that would involve accepting the Shoreline Marine Contractors, quote, in the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred and fifteen, which includes removal of the decking PT boards, and to include disposal to the cocoa landfill, then repairing the handrail along the south ADA ramp, decking and installing nine steel bollards, filling them with concrete and placing reflective yellow plastic cover over them per the BSE consultant plans, as well as replacing three pilings along the west side of the boardwalk and removing this seating area.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Brett, comment?
Doug's procedure. Um, yeah, is it, don't, uh, do we risk having to continue to replace the planters if they are in front of the bollards or bollards?
Yes.
That'd be yes.
The idea is, too, to help kinda stop and be a crash barrier, so people aren't getting injured as much. So we're trying to put a little protection there, too, and-
A little sacrificial-
Yeah.
Soil.
Instead of water barrels.
Plant hardy plants.
Yeah, that or a ramp.
That would be good.
General Lee.
So, uh, so, in all seriousness, are the, are the planters covered as part of the insurance policy?
Yeah, they paid us for it.
Is there deductible associated with insurance, or is it, if, is it, if they, if they crash into it, we get paid in full?
We did, yes.
Yeah.
So.
What's the cost for the planter anyway? It's not-
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Is that just materials and we provide the labor?
With the labor. Yeah, with, with the employees' labor.
And we get compensated for the employees' labor as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've paid us, uh, I believe it was-
Okay, I just wanna make sure it was, it wasn't materials only, and we, we have to take the labor out of-
Yeah.
Yeah, depreciation of the thing is the only thing we lose.
Fair enough, yeah, yeah. Our labor doesn't depreciate, then.
No, it goes up.
It goes, yeah.
Increases.
Lauren?
So, so I make sure I understand, thirty thousand was the settled insurance claim?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is covered all through that claim. Well done, thank you very, very much for that.
Lula Cities? Yeah.
Yeah, we, we paying enough, so, but, but no, I'm glad it covers, right? That, that's good for the design.
And that's because the motorist was uninsured, is that right?
Right. So the, 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 the nine-button reflector sign, and I see the breakout, what was the particular choice to have that feature there?
It's be, it's to let people know that it's dead end. You're supposed to by law have that by the MUTCD, which is the main manual and uniform traffic control devices.
Okay.
And this was designed by the town engineer.
Yeah.
Yep. No, I just wanna make sure, because I'm, I'm paying attention when signs go up. There's an aesthetical quality there that one wants to, to follow as well as the balance with safety. So, um, and I get why the planters are there. I understand that. I think there's an aesthetics to that, that, that folks will like. Um, and you're certainly protecting it. Were there any other design choices that were made that you feel are, are worthy of just bringing up? I know the bollards, I get why they're there, et cetera. You're trying to, again, allow less damage to happen. Any other features? Cause I, I appreciate by the, by the way, the drawing, it helps explain a whole ton rather than in a paragraph form.
Yeah. And we're looking at features, maybe, uh, we've talked about, I know the mayor's talked about it and stuff, we just have to figure out if, like, changing the configuration, we come off of Fifth Avenue right there, um, by wave crest, you know, going to one lane to go right, but we still want to go left and stuff. So there might be some possibility putting some traffic calming devices in there or something.
Yep. All right, I don't have other questions. Thank you for the clear, um, diagram. Helps decision-making a lot.
Doug? Stu?
I'm good.
Public comment? All right, all those in favor of approving the repairs of the boardwalk from the July fifth crash, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, Paul, anything to report?
No report.
Mike?
Um, real quickly, they finished paving yesterday on four and a block of Sixth Avenue, so all of Sixth Avenue's done. They've milled the Watson and Wayne area from A one A on Watson all the way down to Palm, in that Palm intersection. They should be paving, hopefully, with weather permits soon, you know, this week, and then they'll be moving on to South Riverside Drive.
When's that? When's South Riverside? Next week?
Hopefully, we-
Within two weeks?
Yes, sir.
We told them we have to, done before, finish before October first.
I have a question on that, Joe. We do South Riverside, you know, houses have lawn services typically. How are we gonna notify people so they don't?
Yes, we are. We will send flyers to everyone on Riverside.
Plus, we'll post it on social media when I get a good date from Joe, and things like that, too, and put it on our website.
Okay.
Stu, anything to report?
Um, no report.
Doug?
Thank you, Joe, for working with FDOT to de-sign some of Fifth Avenue. That was currently appreciated. I was very surprised that we were able to get results in a very short time period. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Lauren?
Uh, briefly, I want to thank Mike, Stu, and Doug came to the Space Coast League of Cities. It's a resource that continues to allow all of us to interact with other elected officials, uh, city and town managers, et cetera, to exchange information and look at their best practices and, and bring back here what we can, and then, uh, be able to assist them as well if they have questions. Great presentation, but I do wanna thank that, cause I realize it's time out of, of our, our day, but it was great to be there. And, and Mike's wife Tina came, which is great. She seems to be the star of the show, cause she knows everyone in the room, even more than Stu, surprisingly, the top two celebrities. But it's very nice to see when council members and staff take an interest in that type of thing, because it, for me, it is really assisted in problem-solving, understanding. There are even town clerks that are there and a whole range of folks. So, uh, it's nice, uh, when you all show up. So I appreciate you taking that time. That's very gracious and above and beyond. So thank you, thank you, Stu, thank you, Mike.
Brett? Nope, nothing today.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.